About fifteen, I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a forum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, I will take a motion to certify the agenda.
So made.
Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Scott, all four. That's seven oh. Y'all pray with me? God, thank you for the rain, and it's cold weather, and we know that we have these changes in seasons. We pray for our students that'll be traveling, doing different things. Pray for all of our people up here, our buses that are out doing different things. And we lift up our FFA girls to you right now that's gonna come up here, and there's probably lots of people in this room right now that might be nervous. Just calm our nerves, help us do the right thing, and just thank you for the blessing that these kids will do right up here tonight, and as they go on and do this in different places, Lord, just help them to get their parts right and be a blessing to somebody else. Thank you, Lord, for all the good stuff that you give us, amen. Let's do our pledges. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Consider it a weapon for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and the justice of all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to Texas. One nation under God, one indivisible. All right, now we're gonna have some special recognitions. Honor tonight to get to recognize our staff members of the month. If I could have Ms. Stephanie Gertis to come up first, please. You don't get a bonus for tripping over the code word.
Oh, man!
Come on up, Ms. Gertis.
Oh, where are you going?
A little different than what we already lectured. All right. It says, "Compared to all other factors, teachers have the most significant impact on student success, and Ms. Gertis is no exception, as she brings her best to school every day, literally. She has perfect attendance for the year." Now that right there. Along with her strong work ethic, Stephanie is a collaborative instructional leader for the third grade team and the entire elementary campus. As a team leader, she spends countless hours preparing engaging lessons for her students and works diligently to make sure math instruction is aligned. Last year, our third grade math students performed above the state average and increased in every performance indicator on the Math Star assessment. She also is working to encourage writing across the curriculum as her students are using the R A C E responses during math. Ms. Gertis is committed to professional growth and is always seeking new ideas to strengthen her practice, while also serving on many committees to help support the improvement of our campus. However, most importantly, she believes every student matters and every day. She truly cares for her students and goes above and beyond to teach the whole child. Ms. Gertis is a game changer. Our Elementary Teacher of the Month is Ms. Stephanie Gertis. I'm gonna hang up here just a second, 'cause I know there are a group of teachers. I'm actually gonna come down there, because our next one is not able to come up on stage. If I could have Ms. Heather Clinton come forward, please. Says, "Ms. Clinton is an outstanding teacher. We're very grateful she decided to move up to our campus from the elementary campus. She has stepped in as the seventh grade science teacher and is working very hard to meet the needs of her students. She spends time to prepare thoughtful lessons which include varied activities to keep her students' interest while allowing for rigor and diversity. She takes time to develop and implement a creative instructional strategy and approach to her lessons, all to ensure the success of her students. Ms. Clinton remains calm in difficult situations and is very agreeable to Stephanie and to fill additional needs on the campus. She maintains a pleasant class environment and makes her classroom pleasant and welcoming. She assists students in tutorials and is always willing to step up and accommodate students outside of class time. She is a valuable team member to the middle school staff." Our Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Heather Clinton. I'm gonna hang up here, I'm actually gonna come down to you here in just a second, okay? And doing that, why don't you stay down here just a second? Except that would need you to get another two towels for me. If I could have Ms. Rebecca Russell come down? Says, "Ms. Russell has been a consistent and dependable presence at the Mount Vernon High School over the years, and she serves her school and community in a variety of ways. One of the things that makes Ms. Russell so unique is her ability to form strong relationships with all students, even the most challenging among them. Ms. Russell has made the transition this year into a special ed teaching role, and she has been absolutely thriving in that role. Her gifts and abilities have undeniably shown through her, through as she works with her sped students, both in the classroom and through other avenues of special education. She has worked incredibly hard to become as knowledgeable as possible in the area of special education, and has brought that knowledge to our staff in the form of professional development. She has been working directly with teachers to ensure compliance and offering advice, suggestions, in the area of special education to make sure teachers are fully supported in that area. Ms. Russell is always willing to have professional dialogue and will always make her best attempt to implement new strategies into her classroom. Outside the classroom, Ms. Russell always handles her professional responsibilities in a timely and efficient manner. She is an excellent communicator with administration and peers alike. In addition to her classroom teaching role, Ms. Russell leads her campus student council, and she and her students are always looking for ways to improve her campus culture. Also, Ms. Russell leads the Mount Vernon High School Sunshine Committee and is always the first person to be looking out for the needs of her colleagues. Anytime a volunteer is needing for extra duties, it is essentially guaranteed that she will be one of the first people in line. Ms. Russell has never said no when there is a student in need of her help because she has a genuine desire to seek it, and seek both in school and in life. We are forced to have Ms. Russell as a member of the Mount Vernon High School staff, and she is more than worthy of being named Teacher of the Month. The Mount Vernon High School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Rebecca Russell." And next, if I could have Mr. Rayleigh Garcia come forward, please. Ms. Rayleigh is our Campus Support Member of the Month, and this is what her campus had to say about her. "Rayleigh is very deserving of the Campus Support Employee of the Month because she exemplifies bringing your best every day. She serves as our attendance registrar and secretary and has worked tirelessly to assist all parents in completing online registration and made hundreds of phone calls as reminders. In addition, she ensures our students arrive home safely each day with their bus tags, car tags. Even when there are twenty-five parents in the office and the phone is ringing, she remains calm and with a smile on her face. With six hundred-plus students on campus, she fields more phone calls and has the most daily interaction with those served on our campus. Rayleigh is the welcoming face of the office that helps connect our parents, bus drivers, substitutes, custodians, cafeterias, staff, students, and teachers. She is the ultimate multitasker and problem solver. If you need to know something, you can ask her, she knows everything. Rayleigh is a great asset to elementary campus, and she shares her campus vision and inspires others with her caring and service-oriented attitude. We appreciate her hard work and willingness to help. Rayleigh is a game changer." Our Campus Support of the Month person, Ms. Rayleigh Garcia. What I'll do with the board this month, is that okay, board?
That's okay. Get us good ones. Russell's smiling.
Ladies, thank you all very much. Okay, all right.
Is that it on that, Dr. McCullough?
Sir?
Is that on the specimen, this recipe? Got those?
That's it.
Okay. If I count right, my fingers aren't sticky, we have six for open forum for public comments, number three here, so we're gonna start with number one, Joshua Flowers.
Folks, you can choose which one you want, you can use the floor mic, or you can come up to the podium if you'd rather have the floor mic.
Was that sound, was that sound okay for y'all at that floor mic? Can y'all hear it? Okay, up here it's, okay. Just try to, and we'll have to get a little closer to the mic than what Dr. McCullough did, he was all moving there.
Is this fine?
Yes, sir.
Hang on just one second.
Can everybody hear me? We're gonna, we're gonna set a timer up, you've got three minutes, and you've probably read the rules. He'll set this timer up to where you can see it, and then if you get pretty close, within about ten seconds, I'll try to kinda give you a little warning if I'm not too dialed in, and...
No, I appreciate it. My name is Joshua Flowers, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, of the board. I know everybody's talked about solar, you know, the pros, cons, but I really wanna know is, if you really looked at them, all the consequences, the unseen, not just here, but abroad and overseas, because there's a lot of this that, to make these functional are not really green in any way, shape, or form. And I'm, yeah, there's some nerds going on, because I understand what's going on behind the scenes, further than probably what a lot of people do, just by my research and my contacts. A lot of the materials that are in these products come and are owned by China. There's places down in South Africa and Central America that, you know, you don't see it on the news anyway. You won't, because they're hiding it from you. And it's just not people that are affected, it's children that are affected. So with that, I just, this is not, this isn't green. It's never been green, never will be green. I don't care what anybody says, in upper echelon. We all know it's not green. But here's my question for you. Knowing what these things can do, who is gonna come out and talk to my daughter? Who's gonna come and tell her, "Well, I'm sorry your cow died, you know, tough luck"? I can't do that. I can't do that for anybody else's kids, 'cause it's wrong. To knowingly, willingly, subject the community to noxious gases that can either very health hazard causing, cancer, come on, I mean, just electromagnetic radiation that comes off of solar panels? If you look up the research, you won't find it here in the United States, because they don't really wanna let you know. You have to go overseas and find it. It does very bad things to trees and animals. I mean, the last thing I wanna say is, that we don't have the infrastructure to even put out one of these fires. Just on the quick calculations, when they say it's two thousand gallons, it takes about six hundred forty-two football fields of water to put one of these out, minimum, they said. If you look at the average, what it takes to put out a car, tire, Tesla, lithium-ion battery, it's twenty thousand gallons. That's roughly equates about six thousand one hundred thirty-some acre feet of water. Take that, that's six thousand football fields, twelve inches deep. Do we have that? Do we have that capacity? That's just one best. We're gonna have three, not let alone the salttilly. You gotta take that into account, too. Thank you, I see it. That's, I would just like y'all to understand, that's what we're up to.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers, appreciate it. And after Ms. Dennis, Clint Winkler.
You're back there. I'm back, yes. My name is Ginny Dennis. Can you hear me? My name is Ginny Dennis. And my husband, his name is Joe Jane, we are married. I live out at the lake, and I apologize for my voice, but I have a little problem with it. I'm gonna read to you something from my grandmother's Cokeberry, new Cokeberry hymn that was hers and is now mine. And as a child, from my first memories, are two songs. One was "Jesus Loves the Little Children," and this one, which is "This Is My Father's World." And as you think about making the decision on this, I hope you will remember these words. Most of us have learned these words, and if you haven't, I would like for you to think of them. "This is my father's world, and to my listening ears, all nature sings and roundly reigns the music of the spheres. This is my father's world. I rest me in the thought, I rest me in the thought, of rocks and trees, of skies and seas, his hand the wondrous rock. This is my father's world, the birds their carols raise. The morning light, the lily white, declare their maker's praise. This is my father's world. He shines in all its fair." This is my favorite part. "In the rustling grass, I hear him pass. He speaks to me everywhere." And this is what I love about Franklin County. We moved here because of this. If we wanted to live in a stadium with bright lights and solar panels, we might have stayed somewhere else, but we came here. And I hope that you remember, when you think about these decisions, that this is my father's world, and these are rocks and trees and our children's generation. It isn't about solar panels, but if it is, then I would suggest that maybe as a... Something you might think about is clear-cutting all of the trees here. This is a beautiful campus, but maybe it would look good if we just knocked down all the trees and put up solar powers here. And take a moment to think about what that would look like when you're driving up and down thirty-seven, if what you saw, instead of beautiful trees, we saw big metal solar panels and everything in sync with it. Now, thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Winkler, we will have Mr. Truesdale.
Can everybody hear me? All right, I'd like to start by saying thank you to Mr. Aaron, Ms. Lee, and Ms. Brooke for responding to my email last week. I appreciate it, letting me know that y'all got it, got it? It has been brought to my attention that the school board, in an effort to repair the trust of the community that was lost during the bond election, has tasked our teachers to get the community feedback about going to a four-day school week. If this is true, I applaud you for reaching out to the community for our opinion. But if you truly wanna repair the trust in the community, you need to vote no on the solar tax breaks and shut these projects down. The annail rep clearly stated that they have never built a green energy project without a tax break. Secondly, I don't believe y'all have a solid grasp and understanding of what these solar companies are actually planning on installing in our county. And I'm not saying that to be ugly, so don't take it that way, I have an example. The first example is an email sent by Superintendent McCullough on October 12th stating the following. "Guys, I have been asked by the board members to find out if your projects include a vest facility, and if so, how many will you have and how big will they be? These are the type of things that I would think that would have been, that the research would have been done, and you would know the answer to already and not have to email the solar companies to get your answer. Not to mention, you all are gonna vote on this thing any day, and as I said before, you don't have a complete understanding of what they are bringing into our county. So how can y'all with good conscience even consider voting on this tax break? And I'm assuming that you don't know what they're bringing in, because they're not giving y'all the full information, because why would they? I mean, they're about making money for themselves, not worrying about who we want in this community. Lastly, what is the real number the school is gonna get? In September, we were told that it was thirty-four million dollars. In the paper, I saw that it was fourteen million dollars. Once again, we're getting conflicting information, and this is why we have a hard time trusting what's going on, because the story keeps changing. So I ask you to please vote no on the tax break, and don't let these slick-talking snake oil salesmen sell us a dream of millions of dollars in the coffers so they can destroy our beautiful countryside for decades to come. Thank you."
Is it Charla?
Charla.
Charla, sorry. I read earlier without my glasses, and I'm sorry about that.
No, thanks for asking, I get that all the time.
And I have to have it.
So do I. I'd like to read a letter that I actually sent to all of you, so, but my neighbors here have not heard it, so I'm gonna go ahead and just read that, if that's okay. Dear neighbor, I know you're getting a lot of letters right now regarding the proposed solar projects. This one is a little different, and I hope you'll honor me with a few moments of your time. I promise to keep it short. I'm writing this with kindness as one human being to another, one neighbor to another, one who cares about the future of Franklin County to another, and one decision-maker to another. This is too important for me to ignore, and I believe in the Great Commandment, "To love your neighbor as yourself." I take the words "as yourself" literally. Whatever action I take that affects my neighbor is actually affecting me, because we are one and the same, even as we take on different roles and responsibilities. Even though you and I have not had the opportunity to sit down personally and spend time together yet, I do understand how it must feel to be in the situation you're in, because we are the same creation. My name is Charla Truesdale, and I live on FM eighteen ninety-six, next to the proposed dockyard project. I'm a retired health educator with a master's degree and over thirty years' experience promoting well-being in individuals and communities. Although born and raised in Texas, I've moved thirty-three times in my sixty-four years and have lived in small towns, suburbs, cities, three other states, and two other countries. I'm not against or afraid of change, and I have a pretty broad perspective of things. And with this broad background of experience in different locations and with different cultures, I chose to move to Mount Vernon and to live here the rest of my life. In my work with trauma and health promotion, I know that well-being comes from within, and it depends on a sense of safety, security, and trust. I understand that you may feel threatened right now by the outpouring of resistance to these projects. I also feel the frustration and angst of those who have spoken against these projects. We are all feeling threatened, unsafe in our own community, and losing trust in one another. United we stand, divided we fall. We are falling, and it doesn't have to be this way. My simple appeal is this: to humble yourself as a leader and step back into this community. There is only one enemy to be faced, and that is the enemy of deceit. If you look deep inside, you may find that you are deceiving yourself as to the benefits of these projects. That is only because these companies are experts in deception. They are very good at it, but their goal is profit and only profit. We are smarter than that, and we are better than that. If you truly want what is best for Franklin County, then listen to your neighbors. We've done our research, and we are speaking loudly and confidently that these solar projects are not wanted or beneficial. They are threatening our well-being, our beautiful environment, our future livelihoods, and the futures of our children and grandchildren. They are threatening our wonderful community. Is that what you really want? I don't believe that it is, and I say that with all sincerity. Thank you."
Mr. Hanks.
Thank you for your service. I come from a family of teachers. I think most of you might realize that, but, and I'm fourth-generation graduate of Mount Vernon High School, and my cousins in the Hughes side are six generations attending the school here. I know my public. I've been a county officer and a city officer. Thank you for your service. You have a public that you do represent. I have one thousand two hundred signatures to petitions here asking you, please, don't approve of tax breaks for foreign investors and industrial solar. With over one thousand two hundred signatures to petitions, asking that you give no tax breaks for solar industrial complex, with a plea that you not use our children as pawns in efforts to grant tax breaks to foreign investors taking control of Texas farmland, I know your families. With a plea from my heart and from the heart and mind of the public you represent, we ask that you protect our environment, protect our tax base, restore peace in this community, honor our heritage, just say no to tax code three thirteen agreements for the solar industrial complex. And those in this audience joining in my plea, please stand with me in solidarity.
Mr. Barker. Ms. Nixon, Mr. Barker will be our last speaker, so y'all are on deck next.
You won't have to stand up at the end of my speech. In nineteen sixty-nine, my wife and Marilyn Joyce, Marilyn Teague Joyce were the last two to walk across the old school, and it certainly needed to be replaced. And, and they did it, and we came out here. And that was nineteen seventy, I think. We had a problem with the bathrooms then, and we still do. But we may do. We may do, you just walk across, you have to walk in the rain right now. As close as I can tell, and I've been told by teachers, that Mount Vernon has an A-plus rating.
A rating, yes, sir.
Yeah, and that's good. I guess that's as good as you can get, and I don't know if we can get any better if we have more money. And that's really kind of the thrust of my speech, or as high as any school can get now. Now, I do know one lie that was said at one of the meetings, and one of the representatives said there had been a national study that proved land next to the solar fields did not go down in value. I don't believe that. And nobody questioned it, but they ran it through as a truth. And like someone has already said, I don't think there's any question that any of you would vote for the solar field if it was next to your home. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dixon is one of our, we have three ag teachers. Ms. Dixon is, I don't know what else she does.
I wear many hats.
And what do we call our teams? The LDEs? We have different teams, right?
That's correct. We have several different teams that we put together throughout the year. Um, in the fall, we actually present, um, leadership teams to various competitions. We had a district competition just last week. Um, I'm gonna introduce them in just a second. I'm gonna grab my little notes, just like they have their notes, and then I'll come right back. Good? All right, perfect. Okay, so, good evening to everybody here that's in attendance tonight. I do want to take a moment to say thank you to our school board to allow us to come to your meeting tonight so we could present our agricultural issues topic. Um, for those, again, who are not aware, our organization does have competitive events that do demonstrate leadership skills and speaking abilities. That's the goal of those events. This presentation that we're gonna be viewing tonight, again, is from our agricultural issues team who placed second at their district event, and they're gonna be competing in area on Wednesday. So this is gonna serve as a really great practice for them. So as part of their event, they do have to submit a portfolio where they document speaking to public groups such as yourself. This topic that we chose was a topic that you have voiced in the community. It is the solar development and its impact on Franklin County and the county land. The purpose of our issues demonstration is to have the students learn how to present both pro side and con sides to an argument, but not necessarily to take a, a stand or a bias on either side. So we know many of you individuals here in the audience have a very passionate and strong viewpoint on your side of the argument, but again, our presentation is for competition purposes, and it does last about fifteen minutes, and we can only present three pro side and three con side points. There's many points to have out there. All right, um, so for this duration of the presentation, I'd ask that you hold any comments that you have until, uh, the end, where I may address them for you if you have anything. And again, if you have questions, I'll take those after the end of the, uh, presentation. All right. Okay. I'll find yours. Okay. Y'all ready?
Yeah.
I'm gonna step off the stage. And go ahead and go ahead and open this mic right there.
Energy, a crucial and necessary element for continued social development. As a nation, if we want a safe, secure, and sustainable future, we must develop affordable and reliable sources.
Agricultural lands. The foundation for our nation's ability to provide food and feed our citizens is under threat from not only residential development, but industrial development. If we plan to provide food for the next generation, we must preserve our most productive farmlands.
The world's population is expected to grow to over nine point eight billion people within the next thirty years, and with it, the growth of both must happen. But today, we are looking at the possibility of choosing one over the other. Don't we need both? This issue has our small rural community divided and has placed our community school district in the middle of this intense conflict.
The city of Mount Vernon sits on the northeastern side of Texas and resides in the heart of Franklin County. Franklin County, with the population just over ten thousand, is the eighth smallest county out of two hundred and fifty-four in Texas.
While small in size, it is mighty in its agriculture impact. It is still among one of the top-producing counties in Texas, within dairy and rural production, and hay, which supports both the dairy and beef industries. It's a principal crop due to those large sections of pasture. Those pasture lands are the reason, however, why residents within this community are currently being drawn into the divisive solar, no-solar debate. If granted the opportunity to build, it will significantly change the productivity of agricultural lands in Franklin County. The spark that ignited debate on the issue began when the Mount Vernon ISD Board of Trustees was approached by several different green energy companies to review chapter three thirteen applications, which would provide tax payments for up to ten years on solar projects planned in the northern portions of the county.
The place for renewable green energy is what's on the table today? Does big solar belong in Franklin County?
Will this type of business help the town of Mount Vernon, the school district, and the citizens of Franklin County, or hurt them in the long run?
Join us today as the Mount Vernon FFA Ag Issues Team hosts the Franklin County Solar Symposium, where we hope to provide you with a wide array of information dividing our local community. We are happy to help present information collected and deliver it to help educate all members of the community. Today, I, Monica Self, will be serving as moderator. Jayden Blaylock and Addison Clark would like to share with each of you the pro points that solidifies why residents of Franklin County should support the three thirteen decision and the revenue it may bring to the county, whereas Emerson Reed and Peyton Gutsa will argue the cons of the three thirteen agreement and how it may negatively impact the county lands. At this time, we will turn our attention to the points that favor solar integration in Franklin County.
Pro point one focuses on the need for a better, sustainable energy source. No matter your viewpoint, you cannot deny that by twenty fifty, the need for electricity must meet the growing demands of nine point eight billion people on Earth. Where do you expect to get your energy from? The energy obtained from fossil fuels is non-renewable and will eventually run dry. If we, as a society, do not conform and look for better renewable energy sources, we will find ourselves in a cold, dark place.
Renewable energies are the present and future of the world's electricity production. Having a source of energy that is continuously renewable in nature without any human intervention is key to our continued technological growth. Solar energy is one way we must begin to gravitate towards a more sustainable future. It just makes sense to use natural resources like the sun, wind, and water to produce renewable energy. It is just so readily abundant compared to electricity produced from conventional sources. Also, renewable energy drastically reduces the level of carbon dioxide emissions.
That's an important point, Addison. There are zero-carbon emissions in solar energy. These renewable technologies produce energy while respecting the, the environment.
While my colleagues make a good point, they fail to acknowledge the trade-off that solar energy production has, requires in order to provide this energy. And so I offer my first con. Con point one recognizes how solar energy production requires a large amount of land to provide the megawatt power that is forecasted to meet the current and future needs of our population. On average, ten acres of land are needed to produce one megawatt of energy from solar panels. This results in solar companies needing thousands of acres and many square miles of land to produce the same amount of power that traditional coal, natural gas, or nuclear plants can on just a few acres. In a time where food security is rising to the top of the list for many countries, why are we covering up our most productive farmlands?
When we take a closer look at the acreage covered by the lands identified for solar development, we can find at least ten thousand acres that would be displaced out of agriculture production for the next twenty to thirty years. A census ran in two thousand seventeen, had, had the county's agricultural farm and ranch lands covering about one hundred and two thousand acres, twenty-eight percent for crops, fifty-two percent to pasture, which is about fifty-three thousand acres, and fifteen percent to woodlands. In that year, it was also recorded that Franklin County's farmers and ranchers earned over one hundred and thirty-four million dollars from the sales of agriculture products produced from these farmlands. Hay production being the primary crop accounted for about two million, and livestock products and byproducts accounted for the other one hundred and thirty-one million.
Now, let's think about removing ten thousand acres of prime pasture and grazing lands from that fifty-three thousand total. Remember, hay was a principal crop. If solar panels go in over these pasture lands, cows can't eat, poultry farms lose land to spread fertilizers, and you will have a harder time finding adequate amounts of hay for winter forage. It is our opinion that solar would slowly replace the ability to provide for the agricultural needs in this county, and would, and in turn diminish many of the benefits to agricultural business and economy here in Franklin County.
There are so many people and businesses tied into agriculture to that land, and they depend on it, too. It's not just the, it's not just the fertilizer company, it's not just the landowner producer, it's the fertilizer company, the chemical salesman, the feed company, the insurance company, tractor and plume companies, trucking, the list can go on and on. There's a lot of jobs tied into agriculture which could be lost as well.
I appreciate that you brought up economics and financial impacts, because pro point two addresses the benefits that solar farm development would have to the landowners and residents of Franklin County and the town of Mount Vernon. The companies wishing to begin solar projects on the northeastern side of Franklin County stand behind a community-first approach to their developmental plans. For example, ENEL, one of the largest private renewable energy operators in the world, and one of the companies involved, has cited a history of economic improvement and community development, both during and after the solar farm development.
They begin with the first stakeholder, which is actually landowners, since landowners are the foundation of these projects. Those landowners are given substantial annual lease payments per acre in order for the solar company to secure a lease on the land for up to thirty years.
As construction begins, the town and surrounding community can also receive benefits due to an increase in the number of available jobs provided through the construction phase. The solar company hires both local and out-of-town individuals to come in on their projects. Therefore, revenues increase for individuals who rent homes, as well as for local businesses who will notice increased spending at their shops and eateries.
After construction, the revenue for the community doesn't stop there, but now comes in the form of additional tax revenue sources. This money, most of the time, goes to fix community needs, such as bridges, roads, fixing community buildings, and help funding school needs. Several of these solar companies could provide tens of millions in local tax revenue. This could go to, to help make huge advancements in our little community and help improve our school for the foreseeable future.
Wow, you voiced a lot in your second point, but I'd like to take a moment to rebuttal with my second con point. The information you mentioned provided lots to the landowner and the town. We failed to mention anything about the neighboring landowners and homeowners that share fence lines and roads with the solar project. Con point two addresses the impacts made to nearby property owners. We were made aware that when the residents of Franklin County who live in the nearby areas of the intended solar project found its location, they were deeply concerned.
The core reason many families took residence in our county was due to its open views and quiet countryside, all of which is at risk for industrialized development. There are concerns that the solar project, while beneficial tax-wise for the county and landowner, will cause a significant reduction in their own property values. A nice three-to-four-bedroom home with an acreage appraises close to three hundred and fifty thousand, but that could see a reduction from five to ten percent due to a reduced buyer pool in a matter of a few years.
There have also been concerns highlighted from real estate agents, who believe that the land in the immediate areas around the proposed site will take longer to sell, and many new buyers will be wary of investing due to the unforeseen aesthetic value that could be lost.
Finally, in pro point three, there is direct incentive for this school district to adopt the chapter three thirteen agreements. In exchange for the tax value limitation pro, provided by the three thirteen, the three thirteen agreement, in exchange for the, oh, the business agrees to create jobs in the community and provide direct annual economic incentive payments directly to the school, which would allow the school to spend as needed for the improvement of its programs and facilities without being subjected to the Texas Education Code provisions that require districts to share their excess tax revenue with others.
This is often known as the Robin Hood Plan. The value of this incentive payment for just one out of three companies who have applied is above and beyond two point three million, paid out over ten years. The agreement is instrumental for the developer, as it helps to secure financing to construct the project. Otherwise, the project may not be financially viable, and all those benefits mentioned before disappear.
Lastly, in con point three, it has been expressed by residents that many community members are against the solar farm tax payments. There is a belief that reducing taxes by limiting the valuation in this manner is considered bad business for our community. Being in a community whose median age is around forty-two years old, many individuals here are sharing more traditional mindset where everyone works to pay their fair share. Residents here want new businesses to pay in their full amount in order to lessen the burden required to be paid by the current residents.
So I ask you now, to take the points and views expressed in the symposium into consideration and begin to make a decision for yourself. Do you feel that the benefits provided to the community are justified? Or do you feel passionate about the value of the land and the service it provides to Franklin County as it stands today? At this time, we will have closing statements from the pros and cons.
Addison Clark and I discussed the pro side of the issue, highlighting the need for sustainable green energy, direct community benefits, and direct financial incentives for the locals, for the local school districts.
Whereas Peyton Gutsa and I argued for the justification of acres used compared to the cost of land production lost, the financial impacts to nearby landowners and real estate values, as well as the difference of thought in how to handle business tax collections.
Solar development in Texas is an, is an issue that is affecting many school districts. So, so now we ask, will you let what we present to today divide you or guide you? Thank you for your attendance today.
You want him in front of the Mount Vernon deal, or you want him here?
to the cost of land production lost, the financial impacts to nearby landowners and real estate values, as well as the difference of thought in how to handle business tax collections.
Solar development in Texas is an, is an issue that is affecting many school districts. So, so now we ask, will you let what we present to you today divide you or guide you? Thank you for your attendance today.
Yes, dear, you count on Mother Anne, which are Tyler.
Yes, it's important.
Hey, let's give these ladies another hand, which they were.
All right. Move on to item five, consider approval of consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? If there were there, okay. So if there's no further questions on the consent agenda, item five, I think the motion that we approved the consent agenda as presented. That motion is made by Robert, seconded by Linda, all four. Seven oh. Okay. Item six here, convene closed session. So at this time, the board will convene in the closed section for Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, oh seven four, Personnel Matters, Texas Government Code 551.087, discuss commercial or financial information regarding business prospects with which Mount Vernon ISD may conduct economic development negotiations. Item C, Texas Government Code 551, oh seven one, consult with legal counsel as necessary to address legal concerns, implications, and questions regarding the posted agenda items. It is now six oh five. All right. It is eight oh four P M., Board convenes back into open session. Item seven, uh, okay, so that's going to be item eight, we're going to move on to our action items. At this time, uh, item A, acknowledgement of conflict of interest policies, B B F A legal and local in connection with applications for appraised value limitation on qualified property pursuant to Texas Tax Code three thirteen. A is Stockyard Solar Project LLC Comptroller Application eighteen seventy-one. Leanne, you have a copy?
Let's go ahead and read the conflict of interest.
Okay.
Do you want me to do that?
Yes, please.
So on the fourteenth day of November twenty twenty-two, in a duly-called and constituted public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Independent School District, the Board of Trustees reviewed the Board's policies relating to ethics and conflict of interest disclosures, Mount Vernon Independent School District Policies, B B F A legal and B B F A local attached here to Exhibit A. The meeting was duly posted in accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, Texas Government Code. At the meeting, the Board of Trustees had a subsequent item on the agenda to consider withdrawing acceptance of application number nineteen fifty-six for appraised value limitation on qualified property, the application from Lupinis Solar LLC, the applicant pursuant to Chapter three thirteen of the Texas Tax Code. Prior to considering such application from the applicant and after reviewing the attached ethics policies, B B F A legal and local, each of the following board members acknowledged and confirmed that he or she has reviewed the policy and it complied with all conflict of interest policies. So, uh, board members, you will say either no conflict or make disclosure. Uh, if you need to make one, since all are here, there will be none absent. So we'll start with Leanne Ramsey.
No conflict.
Robert Taylor.
No conflict.
Josh Jordan.
No conflict.
Aaron Sanders.
No conflict.
Brooke Masell.
No conflict.
Scott Newsom.
No conflict.
Linda Baird.
No conflict.
Pass that to Dr. McCullough, we'll write on there. That was for eight.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, on the fourteenth day of November twenty twenty-two, in a duly-called and constituted public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Independent School District, the Board of Trustees reviewed the Board's policies relating to ethics and conflict of interest disclosures, Mount Vernon Independent School District Policies, B B F A legal and B B F A local attached here to Exhibit A. The meeting was duly posted in accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, five-five-one, Texas Government Code. At the meeting, the Board of Trustees had a subsequent item on the agenda to consider withdrawing acceptance of application one-nine-five-seven for appraised value limitation on qualified property from Lupinis Solar Two LLC, the applicant pursuant to Chapter three thirteen of the Texas Tax Code. Prior to considering such application from the applicant and after reviewing the attached ethics policies, B B F A legal and local, each of the following board members acknowledged and confirmed that he or she has reviewed the policy and had complied with all conflict of interest policies. We'll call by name again, Leanne Ramsey.
No conflict.
Robert Taylor.
No conflict.
Josh Jordan.
No conflict.
Aaron Sanders.
No conflict.
Brooke Masell.
No conflict.
Scott Newsom.
No conflict.
Linda Baird.
No.
On the fourteenth day of November twenty twenty-two, in a duly-called and constituted public meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Mount Vernon Independent School District, the Board of Trustees reviewed the Board's policies relating to ethics and conflict of interest disclosures, Mount Vernon Independent School District Policies, B B F A legal and B B F A local attached here to Exhibit A. The meeting was duly posted in accordance with the provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code. At the meeting, the Board of Trustees had a subsequent item on the agenda to consider withdrawing acceptance of application one-eight-seven-one for appraised value limitation on qualified property from Stockyard Solar Project LLC pursuant to Chapter three thirteen of the Texas Tax Code. Prior to considering such, sorry, prior to considering such application from the applicant and after reviewing the attached ethics policies, B B F A legal and local, each of the following board members acknowledged and confirmed that he or she has reviewed the policy and complied with all conflict of interest policies. We'll once again call names, Leanne Ramsey.
No conflict.
Robert Taylor.
No conflict.
Josh Jordan.
No conflict.
Aaron Sanders.
No conflict.
Brooke Masell.
No conflict.
Scott Newsom.
No conflict.
You got no conflict on that? On the stockyard? Yeah, the stockyard.
I'm, I'm disposed.
Okay. Yeah, we, we went out of order. Yeah, we did, that's my fault in there, that's my fault. So what is your disclosure, your conflict?
Bem.
Okay. Sorry, Linda Baird, sorry. Thank you, Linda. All right, thank you.
Okay. So let me just do eight, A. And then Chapter C there.
Uh, I think, I think the action taken on was this, was what we just did through the, through the voice, correct, no voting that.
Okay. So that brings us to item B, discussion and possible action to withdraw acceptance of applications for appraised value limitation on qualified property pursuant to Texas Tax Code three thirteen, which is Stockyard Solar Project LLC Comptroller Application eighteen seventy-one, Lupinis Solar LLC Comptroller Application nineteen fifty-six, and Lupinis Solar Two LLC Comptroller Application nineteen fifty-seven. I'm going to make that motion in the form of a resolution of the Board of Trustees of Mount Vernon Independent School District. This will take a second to read through this. Whereas in accordance with the Texas Economic Development Act, Texas Tap Code, Tax Code three thirteen, herein after the act, the proposed application for appraised value limitation on qualified property, the applications was brought before the Mount Vernon ISD Board of Trustees on May ninth, twenty twenty-two, and presented at one of the district's most well-attended public board meetings held in this auditorium. And whereas, at a subsequent meeting held on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, Board President Aaron Sanders expressed, uh, expressly stated, "We are not making any decisions tonight," which was then confirmed that the board was simply voting to accept the applications in order to investigate the financial opportunity and conduct its required due diligence under the act and board policy. And whereas, the district has aging facilities and experiences increasing maintenance and operations M and O costs, which diverts resources that could be better dedicated to the education needs of our students and staff. Whereas diligently investigating this opportunity is consistent with our obligations to the district particularly, particularly in light of our district's significant financial needs. Whereas, the proposed applications would have added approximately one billion to one billion to the district's taxable values that could have been fully taxed for the purposes of paying existing and future bonded indebtedness and would have added another, an additional fourteen million of revenue that is largely protected from recapture. And whereas, the Board of Trustees finds that Mount Vernon ISD has determined that the financial benefits of this proposed tax limitation agreement, agreements do not offset the intangible cost to the relationship between the district and the community, and therefore this compels Mount Vernon ISD to withdraw applications of the pending applications. To withdraw acceptance of the pending applications. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that the foregoing recitals are true and correct and are hereby adopted as finding of fact. It is further resolved that authorization is hereby given for the district to respond to any threatened or pending litigation related to those applications and file any necessary counterclaims and/or ancillary complaints with the State Board of Texas. It is further resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby delegated the authority to execute necessary instruments and make all necessary communications with developers submitting these applications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion seconded by Brooke. At this time, we'll open this up for discussion. Is there any discussion at this time? I'm going to move this.
Can you all hear me? I'm going to reiterate some of what was read in the resolution, um, but first, I want to personally start by dispelling some rumors that I have heard. As Aaron just read, the first time that we had the Chapter three thirteen presented to us was done here in this room on May ninth, publicly posted. There was no hiding on the board's part. Second, on May twenty-third, our board president, Aaron Sanders, stated, and if you want to verify, you can watch the video, it's at the thirty-five minute, twelve-second mark, "We are not making this, a decision today. We are simply accepting the applications to explore the financial opportunity further. That is the duty of the board. To not accept the applications would have been a failure of this board, of our obligations." There's no debate, our school has financial needs. And we have been discussing, and we have been doing our due diligence, and we have been listening. Mr. Morgan said it best, and I have appreciated his comment so much. We are not solar versus non-solar, we are Mount Vernon. Now, just as you have expressed your concerns and what this tax abatement would do for our community, I turn to you and ask that you hear me as well. I care deeply for Mount Vernon. I bleed purple. I did not choose to retire here. This is where my husband and I came to raise our family where we hope to grow old. I have six children, three that are currently at the elementary school, and my youngest three will be starting in the years to come. I tell you this to tell you I care about the long-term success of Mount Vernon, not just as a board member, but someone personally invested. And I plead with you now as a fellow Franklin County citizen, that just as we have heard your voices, that you hear ours as well. The school has financial needs that we are struggling to meet. And with as much vigor as you have put into stopping solar from coming to Franklin County, I ask that you do the same for us and helping us pass the bond. I implore you, while you are here, go look at our ag building. It's the same one that many of you were in. Go walk outside in the cold and walk the path that our cafeteria workers work every day to ensure our high school students can get a hot meal in a room that's already overcrowded. Visit our neighboring towns that we are recruiting against and trying to hire and train staff, see their facilities, see what they are doing. Mount Vernon is behind. When the school starts to deteriorate, Mount Vernon does as well. We are the second-largest employer in Franklin County. When we cannot care for our teachers and staff properly because we have to allocate finances to continuing maintenance costs, that impacts Mount Vernon. When we can't attract families to move here because neighboring schools have more to offer, that affects Mount Vernon. When I cast my vote, note, I am acting in good faith. Good faith that just as we have listened to you, that when the time comes and the school expresses our needs, you will listen as well. And to those in this room that have always supported the school, I thank you, I truly do, and I hope when the time comes, you will show the same tenacity through this process as you have for us. Our teachers and our staff deserve it, as do our students. They, our children, are the future of Franklin County. Thank you, that's all I've got.
Any further discussion? Did I miss anybody? Anybody further to station? Motion has been made by Aaron Sanders and seconded by Brooke to, uh, take action to withdraw acceptance of applications for appraised value limitation on qualified property pursuant to Texas Tax Code three thirteen on solar, Stockyard Solar Project LLC Comptroller Application eighteen seventy-one, Lupinis Solar LLC Comptroller Application nineteen fifty-six, and Lupinis Solar Two LLC Comptroller Application nineteen fifty-seven. All four? Four? Opposed? One? Abstained? Two? Most carries to withdraw the applications. Item C, consider approval of interlocal agreement with Region Eight Education Service Center Benefit Plan Cooperative.
What that is, we are currently, we currently are a part of the, what's called the TIPS, um, cooperative, or formerly called the, the TIPS E B S. It is just a name change. They're taking tips off of it, it's going to be the Region Eight Education Service Center Benefits Plan Cooperative. It is something we're already a part of, and it's just asking, um, for us to, basically just a new signature page to allow us to be a part of that. That'd be my recommendation that we do so.
Okay. Any further questions on that? Okay. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to, uh, consider approval of interlocal agreement with Region Eight Education Service Center Benefit Plan Cooperative as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brooks, seconded by Robert, all four. Seven oh.
Thank you.
And the consider approval of F F A C local policy revision to include administration of opioid antagonist medication. Is that right? Antagonists, yes.
So what you have before you is proposed revision where we are including.
Sorry, just, my knees pressed the button. Sound like your own nap, your own nap.
Uh, with the growing epidemic, uh, with the fentanyl overdoses that we're currently seeing kind of across the nation, and that Commissioner Marath has also been discussing with superintendents across the state of Texas, I met with Tracy Ducker, our lead school nurse, and we felt that it was, um, a time that
that it was a time that we need to go ahead and add an opioid antagonist medication capability. So that will allow us to administer Narcon if we are in a situation where we have an opioid overdose with a student in school. So very similar to an EpiPen where we would be doing her food allergy, which obviously on a metric or scale. The generic version, now Oxon, I wanna say wrong, is the generic version of Narcan. And so she will actually provide training to staff at the locations that would be eligible to be administering this. There will be a training protocol as well as administrative regulation procedures in order to implement such measures.
Any questions for Ms. White on that? At this time we'll take a motion to approve the FFAC Local Policy Revision to include administration of opioid antagonist medication. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Seconded by Leanne, all four. That's seven oh. Moving on to item E, consider approval to add line caller and health services coordinator extra duty compensation to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three staffing list.
Okay, on the line caller, you will see on the page that all we are doing is adding that wording. We have not had a formal line caller in place with these students and our coaches felt that at some crucial point, that it was more beneficial to use actual adults or staff in place of that, so we did not have a shortage in our compensation to cover line callers. So that change creates that. The health services coordinator in lieu of the summer's resignation, that was, those were duties that were not in place. And so this will allow whoever is taking over COVID protocol as well as our wellness plans and overseeing health services to continue to do those duties so that we can assign those to an existing staff member. So that'll just give them a little additional compensation for that.
Any questions for Ms. White on that? Okay. So at this time we need a motion to approve the add line caller and health services coordinator extra duty compensation to the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three staffing list.
Slowed.
Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Robert, all four. Item F, consider approval of police officer salary scale addition to MBISD compensation plan.
Okay, in your fourth packet you will see the zero to twenty-five year step salary scale. And obviously we did not have more than one person in that role, so now with the addition of a potential second officer, we felt the need to go ahead and add the salary scale for the review. You'll see at the bottom we've also notated an additional stipend added to the annual base salary for our police chief levels since we are required to have a chief of police and a school director.
Okay, any questions on that? All right. So, I make a motion that we approve the police officer salary scale addition to Mount Vernon ISD compensation plan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda, all four. Seven.
Thank you.
Consider approval of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three campus and district improvement plans.
I'm gonna call the campus principals up with me. I will start mine this one super easy. Our district improvement plan which you have before you, so we have much momentum going forward in our programs and with the improvements that we've been making in the district. So the only changes that you see on the district improvement plan, which is your fourth attachment in that list, and they should be in alpha order by campus, is we removed the annual incentive for the monthly attendance stipend since that did not gain the rewards that we had hoped. So again, moving forward, we did maintain percentage increases, still focused on our dropout, our discipline referral reduction, as well as our academic performance movement. So if you have any questions? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to campus principals to share their thoughts.
This is Ms. Phillips. If you don't know, Desiree Phillips is our elementary principal. And I've got one of those.
Yes. And so you guys have the campus improvement plan for the elementary. And as you can see from our scores, we've made some really great strides this past year and we're gonna continue to do so. Some of our top priority statements are gonna be to increase our student attendance. We did see a decrease last year from ninety-five to ninety-three and so that's gonna be something we're really focused on, as well as our staff retention. Our staff retention rate dropped twenty-one percent last year and so that's also an area that we, that we are focused on, is improving our school culture and climate. We improved in all performance indicators for third grade reading, fourth grade reading, third grade math, but we did decrease in fourth grade math in all areas. And so, of course, that's one of our major priorities that we're working on is fourth grade math and increasing in all of those areas, as well as we have many students that aren't meeting grade level expectancy in reading. And so that's gonna continue to be a focus of our students, to make sure that our students are reading at grade level before third grade. Based on data and surveys, discipline was an area that teachers really wanted to see improved. And so we have started to implement a multi-tiered system of behavior support. So that is something else, as well as school-wide communication, and that means with the staff and with parents. And that's also been a big focus for this year. Do you guys have any questions?
What's the attendance rate right now?
Right now it is ninety-five percent at the elementary, so. And what we're doing is we've got a, we're really focused, our, we've got kind of a school-wide attendance positive intervention system going on where our classes are in the attendance flag. I just had a parent call me actually today and say that she was out of town and her son was at the grandparents and they wanted, they were like, you know, you can take off and you can stay the day with us, you don't have to go to school. And he said, no, I've gotta be there because my class needs to win the perfect attendance flag. And so we're monitoring that daily and sending letters home and if you have students in elementary school and they're absent, you make it a letter. So, so we're really working on that.
This is Ms. Phillips, first year at the elementary school. About a month ago we had a dad's night down there, all the kids can bring their dads. She planned this deal this year. It's been going on for several years, but she knocked it out hard, so. I try. What is our middle school? How would you like to be, a junior high principal?
It's great, really is.
It's great.
Okay, we didn't change a lot from last year. We're still, we did quite a bit of improvement and we just still want to keep improving still. We are really focusing a lot on our RTI and our interventionist is pulling students in and able to make changes and make great strides in improving their reading and math. What we'd like to do is we'd like to see those continue to improve and continue to move those students from one tier to the next tier. Another of the objectives that we would like to continue to work on is our morale and teacher retention. That is a big area in which we, we had to replace a lot of really good teachers this past year and we think we've done a really good job getting very good qualified teachers, but we're working on morale, we're working on things that'll help retain them and also bring in staff members in the future that our goal is to stay here at Mount Vernon. Some of that that we're doing in that area is doing things with the staff, just fun, just fun things to help morale and trying to make the classroom environment a place where they were disciplined or the education itself is very exciting for the teacher as well as for the student. So we didn't change a lot, we, we still are needing to make some future adjustments as well and I do foresee us making a few adjustment tweaks to it based upon our next committee meeting. Any questions?
Thank you. No interruptions? Well, you can handle high school, we're just gonna let you speak for yourself.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders, I appreciate that. All right, so this is my seventh year here, since we're throwing out how many years we've been here. But so for the high school this year, I wanna start out by talking about attendance, Desiree mentioned it just a second ago, and I think that's something that's kind of been on the minds of everybody this year, certainly it is at the high school as well. Last time I checked, we were just a little bit, little bit south of ninety-five percent, ninety-four point something. So that is something we're gonna continue to keep a watchful eye on this year. Mr. Hammond is the guy that does most of our attendance stuff, but Mr. Brown also looked at it a little bit. He's doing a great job this year of keeping up with the truancy prevention measures, contacting parents, sending out letters, he's done some home visits. When we met the other day with our campus-based team, one of the things we talked about was trying to come up with some creative type incentives that would work at the high school level for attendance, so that's something we're working on and will continue to work on. It gets real challenging, especially if you look at the high school, you always see the freshmen are there the most and it just trickles down to seniors and they like to not show up at all, it seems. So finding something that really motivates them to come to school, I think is an important part of it and a challenging part of it, but it is something that's on the radar. All right, so jumping over to the academic side of it, as it has been for the last few years, the main thing that we're focusing on, and you all know that, you know, we supported, we was an A-level district and the high school is ready to be, but we know that the thing that we have to do to get to where we wanna be at the high school is to continue to improve those STAR scores. So we will continue, as we have last year, really looking at getting more kids to meet to the master's level of performance. And if you go through the campus approval plan, you'll see that we have some specific goals in mind for that, so I won't read them all off to you, but a lot of the strategies remain the same, we did add some new ones. One of the things that we're trying to push this year with our teachers is making sure that, that all of the assignments that we're doing in class and the grading strategies, everything that we do mirrors the level of performance that's needed on STAR. So, so we're asking our teachers to include in their assignments in the grade book, grade book, exactly what standard that assignment is, and everything that they're doing is as close as we can to mimic that level that they're expected to perform at on that STAR test. So that's one thing we're doing. Another, another new thing that we're kind of pushing this year is asking teachers to utilize, I'm talking about core content teachers, asking them to utilize what they call performance assessments that are already included in the curriculum that we use, which is the teacher resource system, because we know that those things are a lot to that test and they're at the depth and the rigor that they, that those kids need in order to be successful in tests. So you can see the other strategies that we have in place there. We did see some gains last year and we're real excited about what some of the teachers that we have this year are doing in the classroom and I think I'll get a chance to talk about that a little bit in a little, in a little while. So we continue to, we continue to look at the improvement on STAR. At the high school level, you know, we have other things that are important as well. Another one of our goals is continue to improve that TSI math score. We're looking for at least forty-five percent this year, sixty, we're looking for sixty-five percent of seniors with one industry-based certification. That's gonna be a little challenging, just because of some of the changes in the CTU world. I'm not fully updated on all of them, but I know there's some changes as far as what certifications are gonna count this year as opposed to what has in the past, so I'm gonna take a hard look at that and what our programs are pushing out this year. So our other goals, you know, about incorporating parents and the community into our, into our school, a lot of that stuff is the same as it has been in the past. Another thing that we really talked about the other day at our committee meeting was figuring out new creative ways to really get parents involved in what's going on. We obviously know it's easy at the high school if we're talking about sports, but when we talk about academic stuff, I've talked about this a lot, it's more challenging to get people really engaged with what's going on at the school. So we're just trying to bounce around some ideas of different types of programs or outreach that we can put together to get more people involved. So when we have our follow-up meeting in January, that'll be one of the items on the agenda, so we may be able to add something to that later on. The goal about, excuse me, the goal about working with the community, you know, we have a great relationship with many service organizations here in Mount Vernon and those will continue as well. And then the last thing, you know, there's some stuff in there about safety and security, which is having, which has obviously been a big deal this year, so we're really trying to pay attention to those details and make sure our campus is as secure as it can be given the situation we're in with multiple buildings and access points and all, and all those things to know about. So we're really trying to pay attention to those things. All right, so that's the quick rundown. Does anybody have questions?
I don't know how to put this, but to be transparent, we're talking, we're talking a lot about truancy and attendance. If kids don't show up to school, we're losing money. So they, if you just skip school, so that's why these guys, an officer candidate, if somebody's not here, that might be part of his job, is to go out, look for them and see what's going on. So it's a whole lot more to it than just kind of skipping school one day, because that hurts us pretty bad. So that was item G, correct?
Motion to approve those candidates' district improvement plans.
At this time I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three campus and district improvement plans as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda, all four. That's seven oh. Item F, consider approval to purchase iPads with Emergency Connectivity Funds Program.
You have that before you, it is a quote for fifty-two thousand nine thirteen, I believe. Anthony was able to get a funding commitment, correct? Do a grant, correct? Isn't that right? Do a grant, it's grant funded. Actually, total committed is seventy-eight, seven, eighteen, twelve through the grant and the iPad quote was for a total of fifty-two, nine, thirteen. So make that, make that recommendation, we approve that purchase.
At this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase, approve to purchase the iPads with Emergency Connectivity Fund Program. Motion made by Leanne, seconded by Josh. Any further discussion? All four. Seven oh. Information items enrollment totals.
You see that in your packet, we are currently, our, when this, when our packet was put together Friday, we were at fifteen seventy-six, that's fifty students from this time last year.
Okay. Campus and department updates. So we just have, or we have some more?
We have campus principals, or remember, want to add anything to what you said a while ago?
You want more?
Would you like to give us more? Come give us more, Mr. Glover. Come give us some more.
This is Mr. Glover from the high school. And here's, right? Seven years. Well, I wasn't totally clear on whether or not we were doing it once or twice, but I did write down some other things for the second attempt, so we might as well go for it.
Cheer with us, some more information.
All right, so, you know, just thinking about a campus update, I wanted to actually look at some actual data that I could actually pull, classroom data, to kind of get us thinking about what's going on this year. So what I did is I, and I should have printed off copy, just I didn't do it, but I'll just kind of read it out. I looked at the most recent twelve Common Unit Assessments that we have given this year, this is in English one, English two, Algebra one, Biology and U S History, combination of all of them, there's twelve of them. So I was kind of comparing last year to this year and I said a minute ago that, that really excited about some of the teachers that we have, not that we're really excited about others, but some of the new, the new faces that we have this year, just doing a fantastic job and I think this might bring to life some of this. So anyway, so for example, you know, out of those twelve tests that I just, just mentioned, comparing last year to this year, we have, we showed increase in fifty-eight percent of those tests so far this year. Three of the twelve, we saw a decrease, it was only about one or two points, and then two of the twelve remained basically the same as last year. What sticks out to me is that, just for example, you know, looking at What sticks out to me is that, just for example, you know, looking at the math, so I'm looking at four math unit assessments that we had comparing last year to this year, and the average growth on this year's scores is about forty points, forty percentage points. So that's significant. And that's just an example of something that's going on right now at the high school every day, that's really, really sticking out to me as, as showing significant growth. It's not just math, there are other areas as well. In English two here, we saw, we've seen an increase of fourteen points on one test and ten on the other. So those are things that are happening that are very, very good. We've really made a concerted effort, and I'll give most of the credit this year to Ms. Brown, who is our CTU director slash curriculum coordinator, really trying to make a push with professional development. So we've done a lot of things this year. Ms. Courtney Wilkins has done some in-house professional development on securely, that's technology training, on monitoring student use and computers in the classroom, which you guys know that's a heavy emphasis right now by teachers using their, using the technology in the classroom. So some in-house training on helping those teachers understand how to effectively use those things and monitor it when they're doing it. Ms. Russell, who was up here earlier, she's done a great job this year. I can't even tell you how good a job she's done this year in the SPED role. She's done some of her own, some of her own training with teachers this year, just a couple of weeks ago, as far as getting them up to date on, on the things that they need to be doing to be in compliance. She's put in some new programs, our programs puts new procedures in place, it's helping them do things more efficiently. Just doing a great job. Ms. Brown, who mentioned a minute ago, she does some in-house training with the LA teachers on textbook resources and increasing writing in the classroom. We've sent teachers to Region A in math at the LA to learn about test redesign. We have done, we've got teachers going to Region A for planning cohorts in math, science at the LA, and then CTU world, we've got a lot of things going on there as well. Teachers going to work-based learning training, learning about practicum and job release and just being in compliance. And then we also have our health science teacher getting certified to teach CPR and life support stuff here on campus. So those are just a quick snapshot of some good things that are going on. Also, a quick shout-out, since I'm up here, to National Honor Society this year. Mr. Saunders is the new NHS director, and those guys have done a great job. They already have a event or a, they have something planned for every month of the year already. They've done a coding and software app, they're doing canned food drives, they've got a shoebox Christmas collection going in December, and then there's various fellow projects that kids are doing throughout the school. So there's just a lot of things going on that weren't necessarily going on just last year. So just a shout-out to those people, and they're doing a great job. So I look forward to being able to bring some more actual results up here next time I come. So, thank you.
All right. Just to mention a few things going on in the middle school. One of the things that we have noticed a lot is everyone's talking about attendance. And so we've, we see a lot of improvement in our, in our attendance and a decrease in our tardies, just with good stressing of the importance of, of being in school, and that's being communicated both to the students and the families, that we're seeing quite a bit of, some improvement there. We see a lot of teachers doing a lot of projects and students in learning, centered learning in the classrooms, really fun to go watch, because the kids are really getting into the projects and, and actually, although they don't like, you know, public speaking anymore than anyone else does, they're really getting into it and finding that when they're showing off their projects, they're really excited about it. We are doing, inside that, we are making sure, the teachers are making sure, make sure everything's across all the curricula. So although it might be a social studies project or a science project, they're working on teaching the same reading, writing skills, so that we keep that across board, trying to improve the texting-type writing that they prefer to do. So the teachers are really working hard in that area and, and trying to cement those ideas in, in the students' projects and activities. UIL practices are continuing right now in preparation for upcoming competitions. We have, in December, we have UIL academics, and this week we have UIL band, and we also have one act play all competing this week. So there's been a lot going on there. Very excited and looking forward to really good results. Lots of our students are involved in decorating right now, decorating our hallways, doors, et cetera, for the holidays. They're really getting into that and finding themes and applying it to their, the particular classes they're in. Some of them are finding ideas for holidays that incorporate math or the science room that they're decorating. They're really having a good time in, in taking care of those. Several of our tier-three students are, a number of are being dismissed from the RTI classes to tier-one and tier-two inside the regular classrooms. They're doing that through achievable measurements that have been identified in their progress monitoring and through our interventionists. As I said earlier, are really working on getting those reading and math skills up. We hope to really, we want a really strong, a really strong A in this year, and we're really working hard to, to get there. Forty-five, forty-five hours are finishing up for many students, and other students are rotating into the groups to get, to get their hours in. Same with the RTI, as they're floating through and rotating in as well. That does create some scheduling difficulties sometimes, because we need to find a place for the kids to go to once they've finished and once they've, you know, made progress in that area. Safety drills, we're having those regularly, and we're happy to say we did well in the safety audit. For our faculty morale, as I mentioned earlier, we're doing lots of things to bring out some team togetherness with our faculty. We've been having a number of cook-off competitions each cycle. They have some really cool teams that they get together and bring in just, just foods to eat and enjoy and just some camaraderie. A lot of positive teacher comments and notes that we make sure that, as administrators, that we go through and leave some, some positive interactions with them, give them some good, just some good team-building strategies that we're trying to use with them. We continue each month to honor our students, where we have our students of the month, and we also are still working on our honorable and perfectly-attended students for our big giveaway at the end of the semester, each semester, where we give away electronics and things for a drawing for any student who has, is entered in through their grades or their attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I really encourage all of you guys to follow and like our elementary basic page. We're working really hard on promoting all of the great things that are happening inside of our school, and so there you'll be able to see daily what's going on. Back to the campus improvement plan, one of the goals, you know, we've improved so much. We were a D campus, now we're a B, but one of the things that we're really gonna work on is that student growth component. And so the elementary is kind of at a disadvantage, because we only have that one grade, so it all falls back on fourth grade. And back to fourth grade math, we've made some STAR performance goals specifically for them, because they were, they decreased in every performance indicator and they were below the state average in approaches needs and masters. And so we, we've set some very lofty goals, very ambitious, but I feel like we can do it. And so we have, together as an Advent team in fourth grade, we've set goals that we will increase our means performance by eleven percent. And basically, that's taking those third-grade students that met, and that's maintaining it. And then we're gonna increase our masters performance by three percent. And the things that we're doing is we're planning with them weekly, kind of like what are said, they're kind of building RTI. We have a phenomenal RTI system in place at elementary school, great interventionists that are extremely instrumental in improving our, our student outcomes. And so we have two instructional coaches that come in also and help plan weekly for, for those content areas. And we're using backwards design, just like Mr. Glover said, we're using the performance assessments. And we're really, we're having those data meetings after those common unit assessments, where we're spiraling in those low-performing standards back into those, because, you know, sometimes you just wanna give the same test that you gave last year, but we have to look at that data and spiral, reteach those standards and spiral those in. One thing that we're really pushing teachers out of their comfort zone is our enrichment. We have enrichment blocks built in in third and fourth grade, and not using that as more remediation, but using that as really enriching and building upon those standards. And I've seen fourth graders create budgets with variable and fixed expenses. Now, to a fourth grader at first, that doesn't really mean a lot, but there's a lot of neat stuff that they're doing, and so those are some things that we're working on. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, principals.
Yep, thank you all. Review still, same to you.
Okay. We are required to go over this in a call board meeting. This goes back on the school safety audit that was performed during the last school year. We just got that paperwork recently, so that's why we're just now going over it. During that school safety audit, we were contracted with Region Eight Education Service Center, we have to do that every three years. They come through on each campus, look at different, different things that they're looking at. They're looking at building entryways, fire, any fire code concerns, electrical concerns, building concerns, general, any general security issues at all. Each of the three campuses, all three scored very well on that, and each one of the campuses, all three, I'll kind of condense into one in regard to what the recommendation was, because they were all the same recommendation. But the recommendation was all classroom doors need to be locked at all times, whether occupied or not. We are living in a time where convenience can be dangerous and deadly. There's a false sense of security with cameras, fencing, entry doors being locked and having to be buzzed into the school, and intruder could enter the building easier than you think and gain access to classrooms, Jim, anywhere he or she would like to be. Never has a locked classroom door been breached or overpowered by a gunman. Locked doors put a substantial barrier in place to saving lives and buying time for an active response to an incident. Through all devices that prevent doors from being locked. So basic recommendation is, is currently what we have in place now, and that is for all classroom doors to be locked, especially for our exterior doors to be locked as well, like any devices that are out there to keep them open, which is all, as Max will say, any doors that are left open, especially outside, are done so for convenience, for the in and out, and not, not necessarily time for safety to be taken into consideration. So that was our safety audit in regard to our campus safety audit. Again, we've got a clean audit on all three campuses. That was the only recommendation. Any, any questions in regard to our campus safety audit? If not, I'll go right into the next part, which are, is our intruder detection audit report. So after the incident in Uvalde, what TH State Texas decided they would do was to make each school campus go through a intruder safety audit. We are, I am notified of that. Basically, I was called, said in October I will come do it. It still comes through a contracted person that Region Eight does. And then I was called again. So we've had one in elementary in October, we had the middle school in November, so we're going to discuss both those right now. With that, what they, what they try to do, they try to come in just plain clothes and try to see if they can gain access to the building. I give high kudos to the elementary campus. That person came at seven forty-five, and how many of you have been around the elementary at seven forty-five lately? Anybody? If you've been around elementary at seven forty-five, there's about three hundred parents trying to drop their kids off during that time. And so, of course, doors, even exterior doors, have to be able to be accessed for students to go into the building. But our staff saw the person, didn't recognize them as a parent who should be, they actually came in on the backside, not even the front side. Our staff saw the person, stopped them, and told them, basically, and escorted them to the offices they're supposed to do. So we passed that part of the audit. Now, they backed up and say this, because we did have a finding in the audit. Back in June, shortly after the unfortunate shooting took place at Uvalde, the TH commissioner, Mike Marath, got on the superintendent call and basically told every superintendent who was on the call at that time that we need to put into place a, a policy to where all of our classroom doors should be locked or would be locked while students were present, instruction was taking place. So again, try to be a real follower. So before school started, we put that in place. When we had our convocation and staff training in August, we shared that with all staff members, that your classroom door must remain locked while students are present, classroom instruction is taking place. So, because then the commissioner came back in late August, early, I think, early September, and said, oh no, that's not a law and it's not a TA mandate, it's just best practice. I say all that to say, but because we did put it in writing, and of course, part of that intruder detection audit, they ask if you do, very honest upfront, yes, we do. Well, because we do have it in writing, that becomes part of the audit as well. So the person doing the audit got with Mr. Kennedy, our police chief, and walked around the elementary campus, and we had one classroom door, one teacher who always has her classroom door locked. That day it was not, for whatever reason, so we were, we were given a, a finding for having one classroom door locked. So even though it's not a TA mandate, and even though it's not a law, they are requiring us to call our safety and security committee together, which we would have had, we will have one in either the end of November or the first of December anyway, but we'll have to address that in our safety and security meeting. We will have to do a training for, for all elementary campus staff to work through a plan of how we make sure that every classroom door is locked. But I can tell you that we continue to take safety very seriously. Just ask a couple of parents who, because they just had some time and they wanted to pull up into the elementary parking lot to watch their kids play on the playground. We had teachers who take that very seriously, they didn't recognize the car or the parents in the car, they called our police chief, as well as, I think, the sheriff's office, and to make sure that those were checked out. So, so our, our teachers and our staff are doing a phenomenal job of making sure that we're keeping a close eye and doing exactly what we've talked, talked to them about, is if you see something, say something. So that was the finding, and we were required in a, in a board meeting such as this to report that, so we're doing that. I am also grateful to be able to say, and I commend, the middle school campus, they had their intruder safety audit last week, and all, they, again, were caught as they were coming in and escorted to the office, and all classroom doors were locked, as well as exterior doors were locked as well. So the middle school passed. High school's not had theirs yet, so we anticipate them to pass as well, but we wanted to let you know that and give a report tonight in regard to the intruder safety audit.
More financial reports. We have that in your, in your packet as well. You've had the opportunity to review those, shows where we are as of the second of November. Any questions in regard to that? Ms. Pan is here and available, and you have any questions?
No questions on that? Okay.
Okay. That's the end of the informational items. Mr. President?
Going to personnel report.
Okay. Do have three different recommendations to make to you. We'll take those one at a time. First, recommendation is for our new police chief, that the board is, asks us to move forward with hiring to against, not police chief, sorry, police officer, to, to help with our school's safety. We interviewed three different people. The committee, many unanimous recommendation to recommend Cody Bradford for that position, so that will be my recommendation to you tonight.
Do I have a motion to accept Cody Bradford as the police officer? No recommendation for that. No motion. No motion for that.
Next is Ms. Kelly Knowles. Ms. Kelly Knowles is making, we're recommending this for a new special ed position, our special ed numbers, especially at the middle school, continue to go up, and so she will take on a, a special ed position at the middle school, so make the recommendation, Ms. Kelly Knowles.
Okay, do we have a motion for Kelly Knowles for our SPED teacher at the middle school?
Motion.
Motion made by Linda, second by Scott, all four, Ms. Knowles. Seven oh.
Next would be Mr. Montana Tible, with Ms. Sumro residing her position and going to NTCC to take another position. It leaves our SPED, our DAP position open.
What does DAP stand for?
That's our Discipline Alternative Education Campus, for students who get to a point, from a disciplinary standpoint, they can no longer stay on the main campus, they still receive the education, but as a disciplinary placement. And so make the recommendation for Montana Tible to be the teacher of our DAP.
And so make the recommendation for Montana Tible, uh, to be the teacher of our DAP.
Okay, do we have a motion for Leanne?
Sorry.
Make the motion that we accept Mr. Tible as DAP teacher. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Linda, all four. Okay, that's seven oh.
Okay, we do have, uh, we do have two resignations to acknowledge, one being the, uh, just said, Jennifer Sumro from Student Services Director, and also Lindsay Cook, pre-K Head Start Day.
Any further business? Nine oh four, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.